I'm not smart enough to come in from out of the rain, you know. Yeah, I would stand it up there than you and your mother said.
Yeah.
To be smart enough and not be in the rain.
So there's some things going on over by your place, huh?
I know, I've been here. Are you talking about what Dave still have cut down all the trees?
Yeah, that's on your property, right?
I know it is. We've always done it.
But you still don't know?
We told him it was okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We're good neighbors. No, you know, Eric and I talked about it a lot and we knew it when we bought it. He, poor David, you know what? He just found out that he's with the owner. And I said, Eric and I talked about it and he said, you know, we don't live up here. And that's his home. And if it makes his life nicer, who cares? You know, really.
I think that's a good idea.
Well, I keep telling him, I said, you know, they've been holding one now. And of course he got really nervous and said, I think, you know, I really like those beads. Maybe a little tomatoes.
There you go. There you go.
So, yeah, it's not a good deal.
If I could.
It's gonna look different though. It's gonna look really different.
Yeah.
And we got the, the abstracter called, the surveyor called, we're gonna get a land survey. So that would be nice.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, that's gonna happen for the next, hopefully, couple weeks. Feels like you have the heat on in here. So it feels like the heat's on in here. It shouldn't. Let's go. Okay. Uh, can you just sit here? Does she notice it running on? I should never sit on this side. My mind is set at a certain temperature. Soft, it doesn't, if it gets above that temperature, it doesn't work. Well, you must have just cleaned the floors. It smells so nice today. I'm gonna go this way. This way. Yeah. This one's getting me some heat today.
Got a couple, uh...
Oh, definitely towards. He probably has not that much of that as he was before. That, that historical society's building, those 40 dollars. Really? Okay, we'll need to somehow... So, a question's...
Right, so different, different, different things.
Most news that they think the state pays 50,000 dollars a year.
I have one for you, Mike.
You know, to end the historical society. We don't have, you're selfish, you too. It's not historical society. So they, they, of course, won't. Not if I get sad, but, of course, him finds it exciting. But he doesn't know the big staff or... I need to find out from Betty who should have made those boxes. Who, who wrote the boxes she had a problem with. Yeah, I think. Which chain? I don't think it was her. She did that or she had five problems. Five. Or that really come out of the way, she had something on her. Or, like, this guy. That's what the number, the numbers in the, uh, buttons were missing in the paper. Jane Tracy Paul, she's gonna bring someone Friday. And she's got, uh, eight or ten or anything missing. She's gonna bring them to the, to the army, sell them on me. Good. Good. That's wonderful. That's really good, Bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, Betty again, someone was supposed to go through the head on their, um, survivors. And one of the guys came up with this way that she, you know, she would say, you know, maybe they're... Yeah, I saw. I said, yes, these are good pictures of the bits that have been removed. This is a different issue. This is trying to help with the concerns. This is...
I guess I try to sort this here.
This is your, oh, yeah.
I guess you don't look, you know, my, 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 Dean. And we all, you know.
Is it on Jason's thing?
Yeah, it's supposed to be. Bertie, what day is our national Monday?
It's Tuesday before our month of August.
It's the seventh, seven?
July is on there, or we, uh, August is on there.
August seventh. It's not off now, that's the one day.
I have four, like, first.
Oh, she has the vacation to July.
August, May, June, July.
Yeah, we're beyond the seventh, huh? Yeah, we're on the range of July, August.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the same week as my, uh, Tuesday.
I know.
Five, yeah.
That's just a week we're talking, because the church has a Bible camp that week. And apples is coming in on Wednesday.
Yeah, apples supposed to be here anyways.
Hopefully, you'd get a lot of PR on that one.
All this, it's raining, so the apples are just taking in. Had to force myself into this. At least I got a room article, be forced to the rain. Growing so fast. It was like this long, I just pulled it the other day. Do you have one of them? Could do the other one. Okay. Cause I think I have it. I think they all took it.
We need to keep them all in that spot.
Yeah. Yeah, and then I went through them and wrote down the ones to the mission. So then, um, last week, that's all the plans that I was releasing. Three years ago, we see. And Jane said, she's got, she's bigger, you know, whatever.
About what's up in the missing? Wow. That's a wonder.
We're missing about 15, but she says she's got 91, 93, 90, whatever. A lot, the old ones, 2,000 or something.
If we should add some kind of, something built that has all of the buttons.
Yeah, for this one.
I think she had all that's up there.
Yeah. The report came from, I love it. So, it's a part of the, so we put all the buttons on there.
God, man, I'll get one of your coffee.
Oh.
Hey.
I think the current conscious circle society is helping out people. They could provide, they're solving, they're taking bits of themselves out of it. And all that's left, and it's like, well, they're trying to affect something, and it's like, that's all they're doing right now. So I wonder if it also affects, is it, um, we're gonna, we're gonna support.
That's true.
And, um, take it back, the person going.
Six o'clock, call meeting in order. We're in the agenda here. Says, "The purpose of this special meeting is for preliminary consideration of allegations or charges involving an individual subject to the council's authority. The meeting may be open at the request of the individual who is the subject of the meeting." Does anybody have anything to say?
So, myself and Chris, um, conducted the investigation and we have comments included. First off, I wanna, I wanna write down, or not write down, but read what, uh, attorney sent us. "In rechecking the special meeting division, assuming the sole issue being considered, the special meeting is an investigation of possible discipline of the mayor and not see a legal way to exclude the mayor from attending if he chooses to be there, since he is a member of the council. In order to call a special meeting, need two members of the five-person council to call for it, and I assume that you have that. Meeting can and should be posted as closed meeting, since misconduct allegations are discussed. However, if the mayor insists that it be open, he can ask, he can so insist, and it must be open since that someone is the subject of the meeting. If closed, it must be reworked, recorded, and the recording must be reserved for three years. If discipline is ultimately found warranted, then, uh, all subsequent meetings on the issue must be open. If discipline is not found warranted, then the information remains private data and should not be made public. However, the subject of the info, of the information is allowed access to information, and we cannot stop informing it public. The mayor should recuse himself from consideration and should not be allowed to participate in the determination as to whether discipline is warranted. As a result, it will take a vote of three out of four councilors to take any action, or any formal action, since the mayor would normally break any ties. Therefore, if you only get two votes to discipline, the actions and discipline will fail, and as I indicated in the report, will remain private. Meeting should be noticed as a closed meeting for preliminary, preliminary consideration of allegations or charges involving individuals subject to the council's authority. I would not use his earning. Let me know if you have any other questions."
That I have on my list.
So, at this time, um, I ask that you recuse yourself and allow Tina to head the, head the chair while we discuss these allegations against you.
Uh, by what authority are you, uh, making that request?
They're in direct conflict of, you're in direct conflict of what we're discussing.
I mean, by what authority?
I'm assuming the council's authority. I'm asking you to recuse yourself. And I'm not, I'm not saying about any, any authority. I'm not just asking you to recuse yourself because you're in conflict of interest.
Well, I'm refusing to accuse myself.
Well, then I make a motion that, uh, the mayor shouldn't chair the meeting because he's in direct contract, conflict of issues pertaining to harassment allegations.
That's an illegal motion. According to, and as chair, it's my job to point out legalities of, of motions. According to, uh, state statute 412 dot 191, under meeting subdivision two, the mayor or, in a mayor's absence, the acting mayor shall preside. And we're talking about meetings here. So, I'm the chair here. That's by law. It is also pointed out, I'll let you speak. It is also pointed out in the, uh, League of Minnesota Cities publications in a number of ways, uh, under the Mayor's Handbook, under, on page 21, role of the mayor in managing meetings. They preside over the meetings to facilitate discussion and they preserve order. Two, role of the presi, the presiding officer. The mayor is the presiding officer of the meeting. On the next page, as the presiding officer, the mayor has a great deal of control. It further goes to say, the mayor, as the presiding officer, in so many cases, uh, I, in, in the legislatures, the League of Minnesota Cities, um... I'm the chair. You cannot take that away from me. So, it's an illegal motion. Motion fails.
I don't think it's an illegal motion because it conflicts interests. And ethically speaking, uh, you can't chair your own, um, allegations of harassment against you. There's, there should be no, it makes total, it makes no total sense at all that, that if you're being alleged for harassment, you can't chair your own harasses, uh, meetings. At all. I mean, how is that in any ethics right?
Well, I have a question. The authority of the council to, uh, have any authority over any other member of, of the council? I don't know where that comes from. Where does, where does the authority of the council say that you are not, you're not, we're not each other's supervisors here? You know, I mean, I, my answer's, my answer is to the people who put me in here. I'm an elected official, just as all of us at this table are elected officials. And so, uh, to consider me as a subordinate, as a, and having authority over me is... Where, where, where do you get that authority? I, I don't understand. Again, by what authority are you taking control of, of what?
How is it that you can...
Allegations of discipline?
How, we're not disciplining. We're coming to a conclusion whether or not you made these allegations, or these allegations are true. This is what we are doing. And in this discussion is the people that are not included in the allegations.
Explain.
You're, you have allegation against you. We have, as a council, have the right to discuss these allegations, to come up to with, with a conclusion. Since you are not able to vote against your own harassment, how else are you going, I mean, how else is this gonna function? If you chair a meeting of, of your own allegations? Ethically, that's not...
So, okay, yeah, I, I just, can I, can I read what the attorney wrote? I mean, I did hear you, but it's, I just want to see the legal community, the sense. You know, there's a lot of things that fall into the ethical category that you're claiming as your, the basis of your argument. I think it's unethical that we should waste city resources in this silly charade of, of kangaroo court with absolutely no evidence, absolutely no due process, absolutely no semblance of fairness about this. I don't even know, this is the first official time that I have heard out of the personnel committee's mouth, harassment. And so therefore, therefore, uh, in an official way. Therefore, what you're, what you're saying is basically, is that it sounds like there's a conclusion already made.
No, there is not a conclusion. This is power conclusion. What we have come up with.
Okay.
As, as gathering evidence. Now, it's the rest of the council, Jason and Tina, to garner whether what we came up with is, is true or not. That's what we are discussing here. Whether or not what our findings are, are conclusive. If they don't find it conclusive, then there's nothing there to be had. But since you think this is a, you know, a circus, that these allegations are silly, it's ridiculous. And this council last September was... Or Chris and I were asked by the council to conduct these allegations against you, which was made in September of last year. Right, so I don't know how you don't know that these charges or these allegations of harassment. This is the first time you've hearing of it. Because I've told you personally, no. I've told you personally, and the council has told you.
All right. Let's put it this way. I will recuse myself from the vote because I don't think it will matter much. Because I'm going to vote in my own favor and probably going to be in the minority because of sentiment that I've heard from the majority of the councils. But I would chair the meeting. That's best of the two. Anyway, so, proceed with your presentment of your evidence. Oh, go ahead, Nancy.
Just looking at my new business. Or I mean, motions are closed. Are we having an open meeting or closed meeting?
I haven't heard a motion.
I make a motion to close the meeting due to private data privacy issues that might come up.
I'm going to forego that and say that it's my decision and I say keep it open. So, that's one... Are we all on the same page with that?
It's your decision, right?
Right, it's my decision, so it's open. Okay, your findings.
Are you done reading the...? Yeah, 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 yeah. I'm sorry, it's just one... This is the initial complaint. And this is all the... No, I can review. I can make a copy.
Where do you want it, or do it?
This is everything that Bernadine has deemed as harassment, except for a few little... I think it's January 11th, 12th, 18th. The rest of these are all council meetings. So, I mean, you can go ahead and review the tapes, or you can even review the recordings, if you wish.
But did you include in your evidence the emails that I sent to her?
I would... That's a no. And this is... All this right here is... From people who have sent in letters.
How are those pertinent?
These are people in the community that have witnessed.
How is that pertinent?
How is that pertinent? People in this community have been here, and these allegations have happened.
Really?
Yes.
Well, then that justifies...
The newsletter.
Oh, that's harassment, okay.
The emails. All right. And then these are character letters from different Barnum mayor and a couple other... Barnum, Bronwell. A few others. What, should I read this? These, this right here. The form. I gave it away. Real author.
So, can you, in summary, tell me what exactly I did that was harassment? In one instance, one instance, what...
One instance? I think we can go back to the latest council meetings, 518.
That was harassment.
Yeah. When you're in for her actions, making copies on your phone of a check. Made a photocopy of a check for Bernadine's on your phone. Yeah. How is that ethical in any way, shape, or form? That's harassment against her. When you tell her that she's not giving all the information to the auditor, because you have received all the information, which you have. But when you say those type of things in public, now the public thinks other things, that she's might be doctoring the books or what have you. So, if that's not harassment against Bernadine...
That does not fall within the definition of harassment that you listed here, though.
Right. That's...
I just want to be careful with throwing out that these actions are harassing.
But it was multiple times. But it wasn't one meeting, it was two meetings.
And I... Believe me, I haven't been there. I know, I just want to be careful.
So, that itself is harassment. He's not a client.
Concerns citizens, so that's... That's what I'm saying.
Be careful is all I'm saying.
No, I am.
I'm just letting him hang, so that's okay. Because what...
And going to the public, you know, obviously stating inability for the clerk to produce detailed financial reporting, that's not harassment? You can't... You're saying that when she did, she had that information? What was that information? When you first started giving it to... You said you had all the information?
No, 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 no. I chair the meeting, okay? If you've got something that you want to be recognized...
This is exactly, this is exactly what I thought was going to happen.
Right, and...
Yeah, exactly. If you chair the meeting, because we cannot discuss...
The motion can't be shut off.
You cannot do that.
Why? Why? Why can I not make that motion?
You can make the motion, but it's not going to be shut off.
If everybody's in favor of it?
No, it's not. Here we've got, again, from the League of Minnesota Cities.
This is likely what I am going to happen.
Allowing the use of cameras, video, and other recording devices, but requiring them to use an unobtrusive matter that does not disrupt or delay the meeting. These are policies that are accepted across the state in all venues. So, camera goes. I want the public to see, and I want my attorney to also see, the slander that's occurring there.
Slander?
Yep. I've already spoken with an attorney, and he seems to think I have an argument to that effect.
Well, since this is the way you want to go about things, I suggest that Bernadine get herself a lawyer and get all the information for herself, or have the lawyer gather all the information. Because this is not going to go anywhere if you chair this meeting. We cannot, as a council, have a discussion about what has been produced. And some of these people don't want to be kept anonymous because they don't want to have repercussions from you. And I've been told that personally. That's why some of these papers are anonymous.
Well, then, you could have written it. Or anybody could have written it. I'm just saying, if it's written by an unsigned letter... Now, these ones are signed by Morgan and Bernadine and Guy. Those are the three letters that I see that would have any kind of legitimacy in any discussion. The others are, you know, names, spears in the jungle.
So, you're saying that Bernadine needs to go in public places? That's not harassment?
What are you talking about? What are you referring to? I'm asking him. What are you referring to?
I'm referring to your conversation.
Of what?
That you had.
Of what? Please be specific on what you're saying.
This person wants to be left anonymous specifically. And she didn't want to have repercussions from you.
Then it's...
No, that means they're fearful. The exact same harassment. Fearful and/or anxious. So, I mean, have you read... Have you read all of it?
I've had, what, I don't know how long here, to read multiple pages. It's 20 after. This was all presented to me en masse, and I'm supposed to...
This is not for you to have to decide anyway. It's for the rest of the council to decide.
Really? So, I don't have anything to say about anything? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying, does the council need to discuss whether or not what we have produced is sufficient?
I understand that. What I'm saying is that...
So, how can we have a discussion when you interject every five minutes?
I let you speak. I was speaking and you interrupted. Now, please, if we want to maintain order, then let's maintain order, okay? What I'm saying is that I haven't had time to look over this multiple-page deal that was placed in front of me 10 minutes ago. No, I haven't read it all. And before I could be able to muster any kind of defense, I would need to look at it and then go, like you did, line by line, and basically, you know, make a case for myself. You know, this is the first time I've had any kind of specifics on what I actually did.
In any investigation, the person that's being accused doesn't get specifics, or dates, or times, or what have you, before an interview.
But they also know their accusers. By law, we have to...
If somebody's accusing him like this email here, that's anonymous. He has a legal right to know the accusers. So, if you're going to use this as evidence, I would be very careful because he has a legal right to know the accuser. I'm just reading it. This is the letter they were referring to, by the way, that I don't think you read yet.
No. Well, I don't think I have it. So, I have not had time to just inspect anything, except for the last 10 minutes. And I scanned it, what else, 10, 20, 25, whatever. Still not an insufficient time for me to take issue with the factual basis of this.
So, let me get this straight. While we're discussing, while we should be discussing this, you can't sit and read it? I mean, Jason's had time to review the whole thing, for most part. I mean, it's not very long. It's four and a half pages.
I would have to go back to my...
As we have discussed it, as we are discussing this, I mean, after we've discussed it, so we can get along with it, so we can move forward. There's, I mean... Get yourself a lawyer, Bernadine.
Good, please do. It's about time we spent somebody else's money besides the taxpayers of this town and try and...
I'm glad you think this is a circus, this is a...
No, because I...
This is whatever, because allegations of harassment are silly and nonsense.
I could have told you everything that was written in that letter from the attorney, and it comes at a cost that was unnecessary for the city to incur. You know, that is all information that's available online in the League of Minnesota Cities. If you want to, they would resource for you, you know, but no. It was, I don't know, it seems like an inappropriate use of funds to try and... For some personal vendetta, you know, how is asking for financials and stating that, you know, I'm not getting harassment? Doesn't fit the definition.
She, I think, what is it?
This is Bernadine's.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I see. When was the date that she said that she had, that she was waiting on you to produce or to make a meeting, call a budget meeting? June 13th, looks like, council meeting? And you kept asking and asking, and she kept on wondering when you were going to call up a meeting, a budget meeting, committee meeting? And that was what was discussed that you were going to do?
I don't recall that.
It's right in the emails that you gave me. That exact exchange is in the email that you gave me.
Do I have it?
No, no, that's the initial complaint. I received it.
There's the emails that I sent. You just tell me what...
Once again, against the actors. Let's see here. Dear Bernadine, as of July, June 13th, City Council meeting a written request for a financial record for the city to the River was submitted by the Budget Committee. Specific items are captured. As mayor and a member of the Budget Committee, I am again requesting those records. Please let me know when they are available. At this... Here, George. At discuss, as discussed at prior council meetings, this information request was completed, and I am awaiting notification of a budget meeting. As of this date, this response, I have not been informed of a date or time of a budget meeting. This is puzzling. Why must budget meeting schedule a meeting before receiving those records? Is there privacy data, data privacy issues? Perhaps after inspection of the records, we decide not to need to meet. Records are data and information to help us determine where efficiencies have. Next. Yeah. And Bernadine, there appears to be confusion. My understanding is that I, that is that, as I made one copy of the requested information, states city resources. A budget meeting was to be scheduled for when information to be presented and reviewed. As a purpose of this committee was not established, it is difficult to determine if the requested information will provide assistance for efficiencies. Please discuss your request with Jason about when and how you want that information and respond. As previously stated, requests have been prepared, and awaiting the committee's meeting following initial request. Now, George, I can make copies for Jason. The purpose of a budget meeting is to assist the voters in prudent appropriation of funds. Other funds. The Budget Committee has duty to review current expenditures to help the city realize future appropriations and efficiencies of those disbursements. What is the issue? Is there a privacy issue? I fail to understand the reluctance to produce requested documents. Why is this getting a budgeting stipulation for producing documents? George, once again, I appreciate the accusations, and I am growing wary of your statements. I consider it harassment. And in requesting you to continue making such statements, I do not have any, have an issue, nor am reluctant to produce the documents. I have brought them with me in the last two meetings. I was informed that the committee would schedule a meeting to review the documents. If there is a misunderstanding, it is a misunderstanding. I did not state there was a stipulation... I did not state there was a stipulation for producing documents. I stated it was my understanding of how documents were to be viewed. As to the purpose of the committee, I was informed since February that a duty list would be provided to establish the goals duties of this newly formed committee. To date, it has not been received. The statements you made are the duties of the council and the council reviews expenditure at each meeting. The more, the information of the committee for that purpose is returned. That is the email.
So what part is that? What is, what part of what I said was harassment?
You kept on asking her when she said to schedule a meeting. And that's, that's the whole purpose of a budget meeting. Not just for you to review and whether or not it is appropriate to schedule a budget meeting. It's for the budget meeting to come together and review the documents. That's, that's the whole purpose of a budget meeting. And why have one if you just want the documents to take home? What's the purpose of a budget meeting if you're just gonna take the documents home?
So when you.
And she, and what she had produced since probably March. And they were sitting here on the table. And you failed to, to see anything that's on this table, ever.
So what you're saying is that, again, the meeting was a stipulation for the documents to be produced. And I'd said, no, it's not, you know, I mean, what, what? This is public data. This is the community, anybody. Anybody can come in here and, and request this information. And I don't know why trying to make decisions going forward with, with money is, is such a, a, a difficult data to get. Why is that?
She has produced it every meeting since probably March. Or April. It was sitting here on the table.
Why didn't she just say?
She didn't get it.
Why didn't she just say, come and get it?
It was sitting right there all the time. Because you failed to look at anything that's on this table, ever. Except for the timelines.
She could have told me that, you know, it, 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 it doesn't fall under the definition of harassment.
It, it does. It does, because you kept asking.
Where did you get this definition of harassment, by the way?
In the dictionary.
Which, which one?
Just now.
Yeah, it does, because there's legal dictionaries, there's abridged dictionaries, there's unabridged dictionaries. Uh, you know, I mean, I could write a dictionary.
They all change the meaning of the word.
I guess the meaning of harassment has changed since I wrote this last.
Well, there's a legal definition of harassment. Is that what you're talking about? So where, what is?
The formal definition of harassment. The act of systematic and continued unwanted and annoying actions of one party or group, including threats and demands. The purpose may vary, including racial prejudice, prejudice, personal malice, an attempt to force someone to quit, quit a job or grant sensual favors, apply pressure to collect a bill, or merely gain sadistic pleasure from making someone fearful or anxious.
So what part does that, do I, does that, uh, email fall out there?
The unwanted and annoying actions of one party.
I was asking for.
And she, she had said to conduct the budget meeting with Jason.
Again, putting a stipulation on it.
There was.
It was a, it was a barrier to.
Yeah, I think I've got it all in order, divided up properly, but well, here you go. Here's the new letter too.
Yeah. Yeah. I was simply asking for stuff and getting, getting pushed away. That's.
You weren't getting pushed away because it was, it was here at the table.
Then why did I say I was never aware of that?
She said it was on the table.
Well, I asked her for, you know, she, when did she say it was on the table?
Every meeting. At the meeting. It was on the table.
You tell me what meeting, uh, that she said it was on the table. You tell me that.
Every meeting, probably since March.
Every meeting?
Yeah, she had it on the table. And you, when you asked for it, she said it's on the table.
Why did it take months to get it?
Because you asked for quite a bit of data and she has other duties along with your question you asked.
But you said, but you said she had it.
As of March, you asked in, what, January?
Yeah.
So it takes, you, you, you know, she had other duties besides fulfilling, uh, uh, data requests. You know, she has city duties to complete. She has city ple, uh, uh, duties to complete. And when she completed it, she had, she put it there on the table for you to review.
No, definitely not.
And you failed to even, to even, the whole thing's a budget meeting.
That's an outright lie. That's an outright, in the accuracy.
Okay, that is a very incorrect.
It was never said, sitting on the table. When I finally asked for it, I had to go over and get it from her. It's right here. I asked for it at an open meeting. That's when I got it. And it was like months after I had initially requested in writing. So, um, and that's what I was trying to get at.
Keep saying that she's doing, you know, passing wrongdoing.
Where, when did I say that and what did I say?
You can look back, uh, August eighth, on your tapes, fifty to fifty-four minutes, where, um, you agree that a budget committee meeting was to be arranged to obtain information. In several states of financial wrongdoing and negative employee work performance issues. For every, or very critical employees and community. Statements of statutes not being followed, derogatory statements about staff and processing of dispersments.
What did I, what were the derogatory statements about staff?
I guess I would have to go back to the, to the tapes. It's all there.
So the tapes have happened?
It's even, it's even recorded. Help me to go to your tapes. I can go on any more.
Well, um, I certainly see that you've done a lot of work here to try and, you know, pin some.
I wasn't trying to pin anything against you.
Just wait. I gave you a lot of time to talk. When I'm talking, that is what order is about, okay? So please remain in order.
Don't put words in my mouth, please. Otherwise.
You will have an opportunity to rebut anything I say, but please do not interrupt, okay? That is order. All right. So as I say, you've taken a lot of effort and time. I don't know how much Chris was involved with this, but you certainly are the, the vanguard of this whole crusade of crucifying George. Uh, for things that are, I'm asking questions. I'm, I'm bucking the system a little bit, yes. I'm trying to get things straightened out. You know, as far as we're a million dollars in debt over the next thirty years. Uh, we've got seventy thousand dollars worth of tank work to make. We've got ten thousand dollars worth of, of repairs to make on the building. And we start spending time, the council starts spending time with this, with this. I don't know what, you know, I mean, spending money at the lawyer, spending time when we could be trying to figure out how to, how to fix things in this city. And it just seems like a waste of time to me. Go ahead.
So I guess, uh, investigating an allegation, which Chris and I were doing, is a waste of time. Because that's a serious matter in all, in all aspects.
Right.
And you're saying it's a waste of time.
And I.
She thinks she's being harassed. Okay? Whether you feel you are not, but she is. She's the one that's getting the, the brunt of, of, of everything that you're putting out. Okay? You have some.
I, I have, just for right now, um, two questions, I guess. Where is the initial request for the investigation? Or the initial request of, and being harassed, and I want this looked into.
This one?
The, the initial one?
Yeah. I don't have the things I was reading in order.
Do we have a date?
Uh, September.
September.
December twelve.
On September seventh, so.
On September twelfth, uh, by the city council, uh, rejected by.
Yeah, it's even back here. I just didn't see this date.
Okay. We were just, I, I wasn't trying to pin anything on you. I sit, I was sitting here gathering information and to bring to the council. So they can make, so we can make a decision whether or not it was or was not. It's not all up to me. I'm not trying to crucify you. I'm not trying to do anything. I'm just, I was just gathering information. If gathering information is wrong, then I guess I'm wrong. Because that's what I did. I gathered information for, for allegations that were against you. And I specifically asked you, come sit down with me, with us, in your flat-out review, um, several times. To come sit down and go over these allegations. You would not, you, you didn't want to do it. You don't, you don't go into an interview with prepared notes in any interview that you go to. That's not the point of the investigation, for having an interview.
I, and this is, I think, more for the, the entire board, I guess, maybe the personal committee all directed to. The initial complaint was September seventh. The way I'm reading this, correct? September seventh. This is the initial, um, something needs to be done because these are very specific instances that happened. Um, September twelfth, we did ask the committee to look into these allegations, right here. I think the rest of this that happened after September twelfth is not ongoing personally. Because this was the original investigation and this is what should have been, should be focused on. This is the, the complaint. We've had eight months to build a case against somebody when we had one initial complaint. Um, I personally don't think any of this other stuff would hold up, wouldn't hold a candle, would win, in my opinion. And that's just my opinion. So I think we do need to focus on this initial complaint. And look at this and see if this complaint in itself is harassment or bullying. I think that anything that came after the twelfth is a whole separate issue, in my opinion. And you guys could please feel free to argue with me or tell me your opinions. That's just how I feel about it. It'd be like if the cops are investigating, you know, pulled me over and, and busted me with drugs on September twelfth, and they charged me with it. Do they have the right to pull me over every day after that for eight months to see if I have drugs on me? No, they don't. I have to have just cops, you know, or they have their cops. So I, I would say let's look at the initial complaint. Let's see if there's evidence around the complaint. And then go from there is what my opinion or my suggestion would be. Because this investigation was started because of this initial complaint.
Like any investigation, it's all, it's part of.
I'm just thinking in the future, if this singles in front of judges and lawyers, is all I'm thinking about. And, and feel free to do what you, I mean, feel free, like I said, I'll definitely have the conversation. I'm not afraid of the conversation, but I think we need to be clear.
I, I, I understand that. And it doesn't come down to that. I, there's no need for it. So if we do exclude everything that happened after the twelfth.
I mean, on this date, it's very clear, um, that there was a complaint made and asked for an investigation about these complaints. Now, have these, these issues continue to happen? Possibly, yes. But I think that if you can prove it once, you don't need to prove it ten times. It's just what I'm saying.
You know, stating publicly to certain members of the community that Bernadine's not handing over financial documentation, and she obviously is, that's obviously harassment. In, in my opinion.
Again. Which I. There's a, there's a, there's a factual argument there. I request, I, I requested information and got back a, uh, uh, and didn't get it. And then I requested it again and didn't get it. So I'm, I'm, I'm failing to see how that's harassment. I was trying to reason with her as far as what's the holdup, but didn't get it. I was, and I, that's considered harassment. Uh, that's a, a, a big stretch. And number two, um, how is that, that, what you just said, that I requested and didn't receive it? How is that not factual? Because I didn't receive it.
It was sitting here the whole time. When after you replied, after the March or April meeting, it was sitting here the whole time. And in that email, she stated, and as the council had agreed, that you would, uh, come, come to, uh, you and Jason would come up to a date for a budget meeting. And that's when she would produce, that's when the, the documents would be presented. And she, and she, and the documents were sitting here the whole time prior to that. So you continue to harass her about that issue that is plain harassment.
So my.
And then telling the public that she's not receiving information when it's all sitting on the table. And, and as between you and Jason have decided, and the council have decided, that you were going to come up with a budget meeting. And it never happened.
So your, my request of public data on two or three occasions within the email and an open meeting in writing, my request for that information, and I, I've got it on my computer at home, I've aired whatever, you know, blah, blah, blah. It's, you know, hereby formally request this information. It's public data. What was the resistance that I, is perfectly illustrated in the responses in the emails? It was evasion. It was, it was utter evasion of, of being, producing the document. So that being harassment, you know, just asking the same question.
I, I don't know how you, how you say it's evasion when she's telling you that when you had agreed to, uh, to sit down and have a budget meeting, when you and Jason and the council itself specifically said that you would sit down and have a budget meeting to view the documentation. I don't know how, how, what her is, is evasive when you had actually said that. So you're going back against your word. And, and, and.
I've never said that, you know, that it was a stipulation for getting the, the, the data. I never said that, that.
Because part of it was, when you were data private.
What? Huh?
Yeah.
What is, what is private about the data?
The data that you request, some of the data that you requested was data private.
Like what?
I don't know. I burned it in with the whole folder she gave, she had to read that, a whole bunch of stuff before she gave it to you. The folder?
No.
Yeah, she did. She read that and a whole bunch of stuff.
That was from the, uh, canceled check copies, which I asked her to do, and that's fine. And I didn't, and the first time I asked her for that, which was, we're talking about the, a year ago, when I asked her for the first yield. And that's the date on the, on the email. It was in March of, uh, it was in January of two thousand sixteen. So it took like four months to actually get the, the, the data from, from that request. So I, I don't know how that's harassment. I, I feel that there was foot-dragging and obstruction at, at, at minimum. I never accused her of doing anything wrong but foot drag, that's all. And I didn't say it, I didn't.
Publicly?
Well. Why, it's public data.
But you don't do that to your public employee. In front of the public.
Because I had attempted to do it via email.
You don't barrage your employee. Oh, yeah, barrage your employee in public, in, in an open meeting.
I, and I tried to be, delay that by requesting it, you know, I thought in a fairly polite manner. Uh, you know, where is it? And all I got was, you gotta have a meeting first, you know? And I said, well, no.
Agreed upon by the council.
Well.
That was what was agreed upon by the council.
So the council didn't want me to have the, the, the information?
No, that's, that's your own level.
The council didn't want me to have.
Go ahead, what do you gotta say?
I've been saying that all the time.
What?
Why do you think the council didn't want you to have?
Because I wasn't getting it. Because.
No, but why did you think that the council didn't want you to have?
Because I wasn't getting it. There must be some, you, look, we, we at this table are the bosses of the city. We make the rules and, you know, we're the supervisors of the staff and, you know, all that kind of good stuff. We write, we assign the checks, approve the dispersments, et cetera. We are the managers, we are the bosses of the city. So if, in fact, an employee is saying that by, you're not in action by my request. by my requesting the failure to produce those documents, you're basically saying, okay, she's doing okay. You know, there's nothing wrong here. So yeah, it's the council that's overseeing. You guys witnessed my request for the information and saw the arguments and saw the requests and lack of production of those documents, but except for the stipulation that I had that we had to have a budget meeting. And then how is that harassment?
And then you complained about hours, that she's worked, that she has too many hours. Well, what do you think she's, she's working her normal hours to produce for the city. Now she's gotta work double time to produce for you.
Double time.
To produce for you. So, you know, so if she takes a month or two to get to you the information, there's nothing wrong with that at all. Because it is, and she had the information sitting here on the table for you when she was done. There was no foot dragging. And then you would criticize her because she had too many hours on her time sheets.
Then why, then why didn't I get the information for months if she had?
You got, you had the information.
I did, if I, why would I now ask her?
One did.
That was when the whole council was present, wasn't it? Was that the budget meeting you're talking about?
No, the original packet of information that I believe she provided George and the copies were made and I returned them, I believe, was the one that George and I sat down with and then we all had also, yes.
But your findings at the meeting that you had, you and George, yeah, it was never presented?
There was no, yeah, I don't know that there was any findings. It was more just crunching numbers and going over things. I don't recall us finding anything or not finding anything.
I guess it was, to me, it was George's idea to form a budget committee in the beginning, but there's never been any action to it. Yeah, there's never been any information given to us as a council. And that's what those committees are for, like me and the safety committee and these people on the personnel committee.
Hardly agree with you on that, yeah.
And you can't, if you're saying you're putting a committee together, you can't say, well, if I deemed necessary, we, you know, why must, why must the budget committees schedule a meeting before receiving these records? Perhaps after inspection of the records, we decided not to meet. So it's totally up to you whether the budget may commit, meet, huh? It should be, it should be as a group, not you by yourself. That's the whole, that's the whole point of this committee.
I said that we were going to make a decision. You know, the fact is, is that I requested information and didn't get it, you know, until months later when it did. Whether or not she had it or whatever, I don't know. But that would, that would be what I would consider foot-dragging. You'll take issue on the other side of that, you know, so if you agree or disagree on the perception of my actions. That seems to be the issue, that I'm asking too many questions. I'm asking about financials. I'm asking about, like, say for instance, last month I asked about, if I was not contacted with the information from the engineer. You know, I requested the information and, you know, and then, I'm being kept out of the loop. You know, so, and it's been a systemic, systematic attempt at the council to keep me out of the loop. And that was illustrated by one of the first resolutions that was brought before the council that tried to say that I couldn't have any contact with any city employees. You know, it's like, you're kidding me, right? You guys remember that? It's in your book when you get it, you know. The personnel committee came out, that was prior to your showing up here. So there's been a systematic attempt at keeping me away from any kind of, you know, information and running of the city. And the cloak of that is to claim harassment, you know, when I'm asking questions and asking for data, that's harassment.
Data that goes produced that you keep asking for and it's sitting there on the table waiting for your view. You review it, you to look at it, you to even notice it. And sitting there, what she's telling you is, it's sitting there on the table for you.
It's certainly not true. So, making, and I take issue with the assumption that you guys have any authority over me. But in order to try to draw close to this whole fiasco, the only thing that you can do to me, if I go with the assumption of your authority, is to recuse, or to censure me, which is basically just a shame-shame naughty boy thing. There is no action that you can take. You can't take away my birthday. You can't, you know, restrict me in any way, you know, from what I do as mayor. I am an elected official, I would take a recall, you know. At, at the worst, you guys are guilty of slandering because you guys are putting together this, this scenario that is based upon absolutely no evidence that would hold up in the court of law. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for copies of everything that you presented here so that I can put it in my file and see what I want and see what I want to do with it. So I'm formally requesting, is there any problem with me getting a copy of all these documents that you have presented to me?
Do you need more than some of that?
No, I need to check the newsletter. I don't know that I saw it. I got a copy at home.
I have a copy at home.
So does anybody have any objections to my, my getting? Can I get copies of all these documents that you presented to the council here? Because I'd certainly like to have time to review them in a little bit more detail so that I can figure out what exactly I want to do with all this stuff that you bring at me. Without objection, when can I get, when can I get a copy of all this stuff?
It's not my call.
I hope you say the same thing. I don't know the legality behind it.
Well, we haven't voted whether this is harassment or not.
Well, whether you vote or not, you know, I would like a copy of these.
Well, actually, if we vote no, you don't get a copy. It says right there, you know, from the lawyer himself, he says, if it's, if it's a no vote, then you...
Where's the, where's the lawyer?
Yeah, I don't have the attorney letter.
I don't believe me, maybe I do.
So this was, this was sent to Bernadine?
Because she has words for Bernadine.
Really?
Because she wanted to make sure that, that what would need to be taken place before the meeting or how the meeting should be completed or ran or whatever.
Hmm. Okay. Meeting should be, this one is not, if the information is... However, if discipline is not warranted, then the information remains private data and should not be made public. However, the subject of the information is allowed access to the information and we can't stop him from making it public. So where, I'm confused with the interpretation of what, what, what...
No, that's, that's...
So, okay, so I would like a copy of all these documents that you produced through your thorough investigation to see where I might go with that. When could I get that?
Whenever you want.
Right now? Okay, good. So... Multiple adjournments. What do you want to do?
Did you make a multiple adjournment?
Yeah. Do I hear a second?
I think you have this guy looking at you. I'll get him a copy for sure.
Yes.
Yeah, anything, yeah.
The, the...
This one?
Yes.
Yeah, for sure. These two, Tina, are referenced directly in the initial complaint? I couldn't find it.
Well, then, I mean, if, if we're limiting to just...
I would say we have to. I would just suggest we do that.
You know, but if we are, then why would George need the copies of all this stuff that was presented?
Again, it's happening again. So you're going to prevent me, you're going to prevent me, you're going to prevent me from getting information?
I asked a question. I am entitled to ask a question.
Go ahead.
That was my question.
Would that just be null and void then? I mean, is it stricken out?
I'm just saying, I know a few went to court for murder and then they brought up the next three years that you think you done. Those would have been new charges.
Yeah, I, I, okay.
Then why are you investigating people and all that? Do you have to go out to court?
Not anything that happened between the charges and the court date, that would all get stricken. There would be new charges and new court dates, but that would, I, I'm a lawyer. I'm a lawyer. I'm just saying, I think we really, I mean, it's very clear, just be careful.
No, that's, I probably agree with you, but I figured those are the pertaining to the allegation itself.
And I know, like I said, those two documents are supportive of what Bernadine said in the initial.
So you're, again, preventing me from seeing all of it?
Preventing you to do...
Then give me the...
We are discussing it whether it is, whether it should be or not, yes.
Oh, okay.
Because if it's not, because it's not going to be, it's not even going to report anymore. Or it's stricken from the report, then it's null and void.
I'm not learning yet, I'm just trying to see what this is the title. I'm guessing it is.
What is it?
Is that rapid allegations? Page three. Towards the bottom where it says email exchange number one? You got the date of 1-3-17? I believe that should be 1-3-18.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure I got my...
Who is, you have email, where is the number one? Where were you? Number one is around here.
Yeah, I couldn't find that one either, but it shows here.
No, Bernadine and George, number two.
I'm just assuming it's 1-3-17. I don't know.
So what are we gonna do here? I like a copy of all pertinent information, everything that was presented here today. Okay, so there's something that I may not get. Is that what you're trying to say?
No, why do you say that? Is it more from my mom?
Well, is it, am I able to get, am I able to get all of it?
We're discussing.
So...
It could be, I don't know.
Your request?
I couldn't find the email number one.
So I'm going to get all of the information, is that right?
I'll go back to my...
Possibly I will.
I just want to make sure.
In the general courses, this is where all this comes in, Georgia. Keep on. Just a moment. I was on the phone.
Yeah, there is another one.
This is the only one. I know, but I don't remember.
I just wanted to make sure. It's not that big of a deal now.
George, you get mistaken. They have it in your pile there.
What?
Then email number one. That's just what...
Oh, wait, I can have my friend...
They do bind it.
See, I have the friend here. It is 17, okay. So the date of that is 1-3-17, just now.
That was the initial request. And in the initial request, we're going to read this as well. Hi Bernadine, prepare for next week's meeting. I have a few questions, or free requests, sorry. First, in compliance with federal ordinance 3.041, I would like a copy of the minutes from the December city council maintenance minutes practical for review. Also, I would like a copy of the tentative agenda for January meeting. Please add to the agenda the following. Discuss a sort of indication to Ray Peterson proposed by the old-timer softball team. Request by Mark Gray to inspect committee pumper in the shop at the Federated. The volumes can be sent electronically. Finally, following Minnesota statute 412.141, I would like to report the balance receipts disbursements by funds for the year. I will reply to your request as soon as possible. Um, then George writes back, have, an hour later. An hour later, George writes back. Have you read the reference statute ordinances? There is no heading to the one that Bernadine resented, George. Yes, I have read the statute ordinances and I will reply to your request as soon as possible. I've been in the office two hours in 2017. I am waiting on customers, opening mail and replying to emails that are starting December month and when that is complete, I will begin the 2016 year-end and prepare the January agenda at that time. I'll forward your request to you. As you are aware, I work two vacations 30 days and will complete the year-end work as efficiently as feasible, seriously. So even there, you, even to start off, you were throwing Minnesota State's chefs out when she's been in the office for two hours. For the whole year.
Well, it set the tone.
You set the tone, George. That started it all. When she, and, and, and...
I'm sorry?
Oh, I didn't say...
In an hour's worth of time, hour, I would say two hours, when she replied back to you with this email that she was, you know, in the office for two hours in 2017. Just not in the office, just started doing her work with year-end. And you're throwing out references and statutes and ordinances. How is that not harassing her already? When she, when she told you that she, she will reply to your request as soon as possible. As soon as possible. And you don't even give her an hour. That's a lot of information to produce in an hour.
If you read the statute that I was referring to, it says on the closing business day, the last business day of the year, this, this information is to be produced by the treasurer. Okay, and I was following the laws again, you know, but it doesn't seem, the laws don't seem to apply. And nobody seemed to care, you know. But, you know, this is, I, and so perhaps, I'm not the most diplomatic of people. I would call it a little bit overzealous in my pursuit of my newly-elected position. Yeah, maybe a little bit, but harassment, I don't think it needs that much.
You're overzealous with this. She does. It's that is harassment. So what, you're just gonna dismiss her that she thinks that's harassment? You just dismiss that? Ah, it's no big deal. I could harass anybody I want. Is that, is that, is that your, you know...
You throw that term out very, very easily.
She thinks it's harassment. We were just seeing and bringing to the council whether it was or was not. We even voted on it. And we haven't, we haven't really discussed it because every time, five minutes...
I saw somewhere where there was, from Bernadine, a request of action, like at the bottom where she had some bolted, more or less conclusion or...
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, we were supposed to... This is what I'm talking about, when she made her initial, or when she...
Thank you.
Everything that's...
Yeah, all the...
Jason, you gotta do the other Q. This is, this is a council decision, not just one person.
Council makes the one.
I might accuse my accusing... Um, do we know, and I don't know if I can directly address Bernadine, but, um, part of the desired outcome was no lone contact, the mayor any checks, any of the signature between meetings are authorized by the acting mayor. I thought we passed that as a motion, I thought that was already happening.
What?
Has there been any lone contact between George and Bernadine? Okay, I, I, I thought that as a council way back when we passed some motion that there wouldn't have been.
Well, no, the motion that you're referring to is a resolution that was...
The resolution.
Passed that no council member shall, um, meet or contact a city staff without the council's approval. And that, again, it, it's a toothless and, and not followed, uh, resolution that, that was passed by the council that, you know, I mean, you know, and Tina comes over here and signs checks, you know?
Right, because you can't... That right was given to me by you, February fourteenth.
I, are you, what are you talking about?
No, it was in the minutes. It wasn't, it wasn't saying that I could sign checks as acting mayor, I could sign checks when you weren't there.
Oh, the minutes are, are, are produced by, you remember that?
Yeah, that was what we...
It was February fourteenth, that was probably the first, that was...
Was that the appointing of all the committees, and when they appointed you acting, is that a different meeting, or is that that meeting?
No, it's that, I, well, let me see, January, February, that start, but it was, it was February fourteenth that I was, it was, there was a motion or whatever resolution made that I could sign checks between meetings if the mayor was not available.
I, I believe, yeah, I, I kind of recall it.
George hated it, and George was the one that said, yeah, it's good.
Yeah, I do, I, I do vaguely recall it to be honest with you, yeah. Because then it was the, well, what makes me not available, or what, what's deemed unavailable, and, well, you know, um... I just, I mean, I'm just looking at the desired outcome, is all I'm really looking at right now, because we have to really come up with that.
You guys stay here all night, guys, let's go. So all these guys are thinking, anybody in the, in the gallery got anything to say?
Talked to you a couple months when you were in office, and I said if you just apologized to her, she'd accept your apology, and all this could go beyond, just say you're sorry, and I bet you there wouldn't even be a vote, that it'd be all over.
Is that why you said here that you also believe that she's taking, that, that when you were in my basement talking to me, you also believe that she's taking money? What?
You did, you said that, you said, you said you can't prove it, but you believe that she's stealing money. And then the other, two months ago, two months ago, we watched the star at the space station go by, you said, I go, do you, first you talk about Dave stealing all her lumber, and then you said, you know, Bernadine says that, I go, do you really believe Bernadine's stealing, your exact...
This is Todd Lawrence speaking.
His exact words were, "Not much, but I don't want what happened to her, what happened to the secretary in Barnum." Todd Lawrence, he told that to me half a block away from here. Yeah. Go along, you tell all these stories to a bunch of people about her, about Dave, you know, you just want to, this, only reason that you wanted to become mayor is to take into personal grudge after her. That's a factor. Now, if you wanted to do something for the city, you would say, Bernadine, I'm sorry, and that would end it, we could go on.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor? When was the first time you asked for financials? What, what was the date you took off?
January third, two thousand seventeen, I think is the first timeline.
When's the first time you asked for financials?
That was it, that, that was that email that...
January two thousand seventeen?
January third is the date listed.
And when did you receive financials?
I think in, I don't know exactly.
Outside me?
I don't know exactly when, but months, because I, I'm requesting, there's another email here requesting, uh, Angeles.
Did you contact the leading Minnesota Zinedine and ask him how long it should take?
Yep.
Or they said?
A reasonable amount of time, and I, I talked to Jeanette Behr and, and she was kind of surprised. That Jeanette Behr is a researcher down there.
Now further talks, you guys want to, friends, George, so we do talk about things, but I'm just saying to the council, when you ask, ask, and I can see where it seemed like a pain in the butt. The solution to this, you know, other than Todd, and you and I have talked before too, the solution to this wouldn't be an apology, the solution will be to get, to give the financials you asked for.
Mark, we're on the table, sir.
Well, that's, I was at a bunch of those meetings earlier, around fire department issues and things. I was there, no one, no one ever said, hey, they're hidden in that pile of meat. When an individual under data, under the Freedom of Information Act, asks for, in a written request, but when the verbals weren't working, when they ask for the information, they are to be presented with the information, that is the law.
If you look at, if you look at the tapes, so several times when he asked for them, all the council people pointed, right there, there, George. Oh, I don't see him, I don't see him, and those, he taped himself, they were there, he was never denied anything that he requested.
No, I don't believe that.
No, I was here at these meetings, Mark, you weren't, and all the council people pointed them out, there they are, there they are, I just don't see it, I don't understand this, those were his words.
Reality's that, George, it is on tape, so if you guys can give me a reference as to where this alleged, uh, presentation of, of data that I requested is there, right? I would really appreciate it, I will, I will recant and apologize and whatever.
She says, she says it's...
I mean, I'm just saying, it's on the tape, I'll, you know, just give me a reference as to where it, it is and, and I'll, I'll, I'll back out. You know, but it's, uh, what we hear, what we hear now is just stuff being made up. So...
So, so on the email exchange, um, September, when she, when, that's when she, when you emailed her, she stated she had the information. And, and, and it was stated that at the coun, at, at the council meeting that you guys were forming, have it at the budget meeting, that was her understanding. And she had it prior to that, it was sitting here on the table, for review. And some of, and some of that information, was there any private data, information, Bernadine, in that packet that you...
I don't recall, there are so many.
But she had a packet of information sitting there waiting for you, and you just refused to, to, to look at it, to view it, to see it. I don't know, I don't know what, what, what your, uh, what it was, but she said that she had it for you. And as we discussed at a council meeting, that you would formulate it, or that you would put a budget meeting together, with, with Jason, to re, review it.
So what you're saying is that September, is that, is that the date that you're referring to?
That's, that's, that's just the emails that, uh, from, from the two of you that were exchanged.
So my, my initial, and to answer your question, my initial request was on January first of, uh, January third, I believe, of, of two thousand seventeen, and this same request is being reiterated nine months later. That was the case, Bernadine.
That's a false statement.
Well, that's what you just said.
No, the one, the one that was being stated was made out of June meeting. July, I told you it was ready, you said you were going to do a grand town budget meeting, and I should give it to you then. You've made several requests, and have been given several requests.
I, I, right, and it took till September to get it, I asked for it outright.
That was from June, that wasn't from January.
But in Sep, you said September, that's the personnel committee that could find us?
Oh, where did it...
That was when I filed my...
I was looking for the, that second email, where, where it was...
We get too many papers, man.
Yeah, this, this email was, you know, September seventh, this was before the meeting. When she had, and before that, this was, you had discussed in prior meeting that the information was ready, that you would formulate the budget meeting.
So... So why, in between January and September, did I not, did this public data not become in my possession?
She had it ready for you, it was sitting on the table.
Why didn't it become in my possession?
Which other, which meeting, what month?
So the budget meeting is, is part of the, part of the deal. What's that?
Isn't that when you were supposed to discuss it, go through it, was that your budget meeting?
So I can't get the data? I don't get your question. I, what I'm, what I'm hearing from you is that I'm asking why I didn't get the information, and you're saying that the meeting had to happen.
I think we're doing a great job.
For a budget meeting?
That's not how you want to do the information.
Exactly.
Committee.
Right, exactly. So you go into a budget committee meeting without having looked at the figures until you arrive there? No, that doesn't make any sense, when you take a test, you do a little bit of studying, when you have a task to do, you do some research. When you play, when you're, when you go out on a ball field, you practice before you throw it, before you go out and play the game. This is all preparation for the meeting, and if you don't do any prep, and it's, it's, it's like, no, what are we, we're all sitting here like in a library? You know, that, that's unpredictable time.
Bernadine would have been there, and if you had any questions, she would have been happily to, to answer for you.
And what I, what I would claim to that is that I would need to formulate intelligent and pertinent questions by doing a little bit of critical thinking and research.
So, so with all the information that you were giving, uh, a couple, when was she, when was he giving all the information, the big packet? With the privacy data, with the checks?
September, was it September, August, September? Well, no, it's one month later.
Probably two, two months ago, probably two months ago.
And January's request for the information, that income, would have been presented at February, and then the odd would have also been, I mean, that presentation would have been in March. Um, I don't recall, there were several, um, requests for information that were completed and given.
I think more than January, that big, that big packet of information.
I don't know, we can check it.
There's been more even after the September one, there's been additional requests.
Jason, I, I, I mean, okay, we've been here for well over an hour, I'm guessing, um, we still haven't decided, do, do we have a legal opinion on whether the council is authority over the mayor or any one of the council members? Do we have a legal opinion on that?
Do I have a legal, what do you mean?
Um, George stated in the beginning that he considers himself an elected official and answers to the voters. Do we have a legal opinion whether we are elected officials or whether we are under the authority of the council?
As to...
I mean, we can say, you know, let's say we, I, I'm looking at the desired outcome, just so you know. Um, some of the things in the desired outcome, um, say reprimand? Do we have the legal authority to reprimand something on this council, as a council?
When I, when I talked to the lawyer, discussed, um, how we should kind of go, go with the meeting or go through the meeting, um, I said, what happens, uh, when the outcome, and say we do have a reprimand? Um, what do we do? He goes, you can do anything you want, but the mayor himself does not have to follow. So we, you know, we can, we can say anything we want. So I asked him, what, what was the purpose, what's the purpose, what's, what's the purpose of this, you know, this harassment allegation, or the, the, the investigation itself? He goes, so she has, so the city is not liable when she goes to court for harassment?
Okay.
If, if she decides she wants to go to court.
Right, right, it would take it off.
Yeah, it would be off the city and the council, yes.
Okay.
If she decides to take it to court.
Because, yeah, I, I, I would really like to find out, I mean, or, I, I mean, not immediately, because I'll be gone, but I think that's really what this council just figure out is where the authority lies with the council.
We, I mean, we can make, you know, if the council, uh, you know, agrees it was harassment, you know, it just states that it was harassment, and, and if we give out, uh, any sort of reprimand or, or whatever, then George doesn't have fault. If this is, I guess, it's just a preliminary thing, um, it's to, in case she, in case Bernadine wants to take legal action, uh, we did, we did just put it, put our hands in her, in her pants and, and not do anything, Doc.
C Y D, I get it.
Um, so, and, and that's what I, you know, the answer the lawyer told me is, is you can't, I mean, somebody has allegations and you have to, um, at least look into them. Or the city will be liable for, you know, if she goes and decides to take...
Yes.
If we, if we, yeah, if we do anything, yeah.
Okay, I'm with you, okay, I just...
But as, uh, George doesn't have to, he doesn't have fault of anything, because he's an elected official.
The, the research that I've done is that you as, if, again, you have the authority, which I would argue against, um, if you have a going assumption you have the authority, again, the thing that you can do is censure me, censure any of us, you know? And what that is, is basically just, you're, 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 shame on you, that's, you know, naughty boy. You know, that, that's naughty, naughty girl, whoever it is. And that's the only thing that, that really I found that, that you, that you as a council can, can do.
And, and ethically, that wouldn't be proper, the council would do anything. This is just, um, to see if the council raises it for harassment and that, that Bernadine, if she decides to take it to court, uh, it, it, she can't necessarily sue the city, so, because we did an action. We didn't enact, we acted upon her.
So it's not preliminary, it's actually the replaying on taking an action here, is that what you're saying?
I don't think that's what he said.
Well...
He, he said if there is an action.
So my, my question is, is that why are we still here? Because, I mean, it says preliminary consideration of allegations or charges involving an individual, such as the councils and so on.
Yeah.
So, so are you guys going to take an action tonight? Because if you're going to take an action, that does not belong in the category of the agenda.
So those are the, actually, that, that's why we're here, is to, uh, vote on whether or not, come to a conclusion whether or not this is...
That's not what it said here. It says preliminary consideration, prelimin, preliminary means just to look at things prior to the event. So are we gonna have the event here and, and not follow the agenda? Is that what you're trying to say? Or what, what are we doing here? What is the, because the stated purpose of the meeting is preliminary event consideration of allegation. Doesn't say action, doesn't say, you know, anything about determination of, uh, of consequences or, you know, any action by the council. So what are you guys gonna do?
Basically what it is, we'll take this information and mail it over at the next council meeting, it'll be presented perhaps, and say, okay, what do we as a council feel? Do you think, is that how it should go there?
I, I don't know, I'm, you know, this, this whole, this whole frame, this whole, the council's whole, is, is dysfunctional. I mean, without a God, and all of ours, not just one, all of us, and I'm, and I'm frankly sick of it. I'm getting, I'm, I'm, I'm dead serious about the results, I've, I've had enough.
I understand.
You know, you say you don't, even you're not harassing Bernadine, Bernadine thinks she is, she is fearful of you, when you come to that office, she is afraid of you. Okay, she has said that many times to me, and I don't want to put that in the report because I didn't want to go about it, go about it that way. Not at all. What, no! Why can't we have like civilized people here?
Okay, that's what I'm trying to do, so if you crank it down just a little bit... So if you crank it down just a little bit, okay?
Sick of arguing, sick of the name-barring, I'm sick of he said, she said, whole crap. It's ridiculous.
I agree, I agree. Let's talk about what we need to do for the city, and why we're playing this game of legal opinion and in court.
Quit going up the community and telling bad things about Bernadine to the citizens in this community.
Then just, I'm just telling the actual story. I'm just telling the actual story.
Going up to the community and saying these things about Bernadine? How was that, how was that not valid?
What did you say in your own newsletter? What did you write in that, right in the middle section?
What does it say? What does it say?
And those are your words.
Yeah, my words, which...
The part that's asterisked.
You don't discuss those things.
Inability or reluctance of the city clerk to produce financial data, and this was...
Yeah, if you notice, problems with employees four and a half council, not to their fault.
I was at the council meeting, and I handed a written request, and she gave me her...
This is what we're on the stage, she gave it to you seven times.
And here it says, "Four and a half months," okay, I was, you know, maybe September was a little bit long, but it did take a while.
But it's stuff like that, you put it on the public, it's pretty bad.
Well, then why was it...
No, it's years longer than her. If you're talking about slander, you're slandering her in this.
She might be intimidated by you, talking about that.
I said, "The main area of conflict to date has been the inability or reluctance of the city clerk to produce detailed financial reporting."
Which she had given me.
But it wasn't in my position, it wasn't in my possession. What are you talking about? It still wasn't in my possession, I requested it and didn't receive it.
In every meeting, you criticize the minutes. Whether she puts every single on that you say, or then she takes us out. It's annoying.
There is not, there has not been, there has not been a council meeting that I have been at, that you have been happy with the minutes, ever. You have criticized Bernadine for every, every month that I've been here, about the minutes.
I have...
You have.
So...
Because they're not to your specs or your liking, or they don't portray you correctly. It's just a paraphrase of what happened. It doesn't, it's not supposed to say everything that you said. Of course it's not going to say everything that you said. And some of the things you might not like that are in there, and some of the things I might not like are in there. But they're in there because she's paraphrasing. If she wanted to do the whole, it'd be...
It's a condensed version.
It'd be ten pages, twenty pages long. This is, that's criticizing your employee in front of God and everybody, when that should be kept in-house.
It's a public meeting, these are public documents.
You're a board, you're an employee.
I'm telling you, this is enough.
That's why she's being harassed.
I'm pointing out inaccuracies, is what that is about. Inaccuracies, editorializing, and, you know, leaving out pertinent information, you know? So if you're going, because what happens with the minutes, that's a legal document as a recording of the actual occurrence of business at the meeting. And so when it's written in the, and the things that I'm hearing are accused, "I was accused," or something like that, when you say that, that's an interpretation, that's a judgment. That's not a fact, that is a judgment call, that is inaccurate. And I'm pointing out those kinds of things that portray me in a bad light, you know, because I don't like it.
Not necessarily, there's nothing in those minutes that ever portrayed you in a bad light.
Oh, so my perception doesn't mean anything, but other people's perception of harassment actually carries weight. Is that what you're trying to say?
But when we ask what they are, and you don't say anything.
I come up with specifics.
No, you have not, more time I think you have.
I think we could sit here and go back and talk all night, we're just not getting down to it. Let's get going on what we're going to do here, what are you guys going to do?
We have a preliminary consideration of allegations is what we have on the agenda. And that's pretty much what we're stuck at dealing with at this point, the way I understand it, being that this was the agenda set out for the special meeting. We've all reviewed or had an opportunity to review, I'm assuming.
At this point, they can promote it or anything, is this preliminary or...
Without knowing the definition of preliminary off the top of my head, it's consideration. It doesn't say that we are going to take action at all. I believe it probably should've said preliminary consideration, and then line two should've said, "Take any action as needed," or something to that effect. As you guys know, you know, I won't be part of this in the future. Not that I'm going to miss this at all, but...
Definition of preliminary, you're proceeding and leading up to the main part, matter or business, you know? So prepare for it, so...
I would strongly encourage this board to look at the outcomes that were requested by the accuser. And look at the data from the, I gave it to Tina, she put it in a separate pile. I would strongly encourage you guys to do that. All I can really say at this point, I don't believe we can take action, being the way that the agenda is written up.
That's taken from page 10 of Minnesota Open Meeting Law Reviser of Statutes from 2017.
Can I see it? Page 10. Because I might be all wrong. Okay, yeah, I'll read this real quickly. This was provided by George, Minnesota Open Meeting Law. I believe this is state statute, correct?
This is a revised statute.
A public body must close meetings for preliminary consideration of allegations or charges against an individual subject to authority. If the members of the public body conclude that discipline may be warranted as a result of those charges, further meetings or hearings related to those charges must be open. So I think we have to decide right now if, as a board, and I'm not saying George votes, George doesn't vote, I don't care at this point, I think we can safely say, in my opinion, that discipline may be warranted in the future, and then you have future meetings to decide the discipline.
Yeah, for the discipline.
That's the way I read that, I think we can act upon if we think there's going to be any future discipline. And then you guys will have to decide discipline and what it is, and guilty or not guilty, or whatever, later. We have a lot of evidence in front of us, we have a lot of, we have the accusations, we have the, what she requested is desired outcome.
Well, I think we can't really look at the desired, I think we, that was...
No, we don't have to look at it, I think we take into consideration the user's desired outcome.
Yeah, but the preliminary is, we're not even looking at what her outcome is. We're trying to discuss whether or not the actions have occurred.
Right.
So if we can decide that...
Read it again, you got to begin, oh, 10, page 10.
I just want to make sure that I'm on the right page, because I'm going to waste my time. If the members of this public body conclude that discipline may be warranted, doesn't say we have to say there's going to be discipline, we just have to say that it may be warranted as a result of those charges in her hand. There's further meetings that discuss, that decide from there.
The discipline act.
Not, it's just that further meetings are open, and all the time.
It's just, it's our conclusion. I mean, even if we did say, you know, Bernadine's desired outcome, you don't have to follow her, we know that. So you don't have to, you don't have to say it, we know that you have.
I know, I want to go to the right, that doesn't mean I'm going to the right, I understand that.
So you don't need to bring it up when I say we, when we're coming to a conclusion, you know, or having a discipline outcome, we know that you don't have to follow this.
I'm just being a little bit harsh, specific, you know, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm just, can I be, I can be part of the discussion. But I wish you guys would, you could get to adjournment somehow, and I would like a copy of all these documents as well. Because this, we're going round and round, and just getting our blood boiling and stuff like that, you know, so...
This is a different one. I don't know, I don't know how to read into it, to be honest with you, Dave. Because this is just, I know when meetings are open or not, it doesn't like talk about the process behind.
No, it doesn't.
Behind the accusations, and this is just referring to when meetings are open and not open.
You know, I, because I'm reading what Frank had sent, you know, because that's how he asked to work this. But he also goes into the voting process.
Okay, right.
You know, in this email, he goes on how to, about how to vote.
These are like a list of...
So I can't get a copy, is that what you're saying?
I don't say that, George.
Then why don't you give me a copy?
I don't have them, they're not mine to give, okay?
Whose are they to give? Then I'll ask them?
Nobody's denying anything to George.
Good, then give it to me, when am I going to get them?
This is why she put, she is claiming harassment.
I'm just asking...
This is why she's claiming harassment.
I'm just asking when I can get them, is it next year, is it two years from now, is it next, or is it tomorrow? What? A reasonable amount of time. A reasonable amount of time, is all I'm asking.
You know what, you're going to have a hard time finding anybody to serve on this council, the way this is going. I'm ready to quit.
I'm ready.
I'm ready to resign. I am dead serious. Because this is harassment to me. I've heard you ten times, and we said, "Well, we'll give it to you," but we need to make copies first, and with Bernadine, we need to go and stop it, or conclude our meeting, and we'll make copies for you. But of course, but you're impatient.
No, I just want an answer. I just want an answer.
You have your answer.
When? I didn't get an answer. When, okay, so remind me what the answer to that when question was.
About copies? I wasn't understanding when you were going to get them, but I've been tuning up sometimes too as I'm reading, so...
I'm just asking when, is it next week, is it, I don't know, two weeks from the next council meeting, whatever, I don't know. I'm just asking when.
Leave it, F and L, I'll burn all of it, I don't really care. I'm frankly sick of it. At all.
Now I'm asking, Dave, if I'm asking when I can get them.
Because you already had your answer.
Yeah, you did.
Remind me what the answer was.
Why do we have to keep reminding you?
One time, that's all, I didn't hear.
I think you said, "Okay."
Okay, and then I asked, and I'm still not getting the when. Is it tomorrow, next week?
Did I not just say five minutes ago that I, after the meeting?
Oh, okay.
Did I just not say that?
Cool, cool, that'll work.
If any other data private, are currently released, or do you need to check?
I don't, I don't know if it's considered data private, to be honest with you.
I'll think maybe we could check tomorrow, and then obtain copies, I can mail them tomorrow.
That'll work, perfect, excellent.
Get back here, Ben.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I don't think there's anything really data private. But that just, you know, that there is a report that was filed, filed, you know, if that constitutes, and if it doesn't, you know, whatever. That was... That was filed by Bob Ratner, murder court. Stay in it. I was, when I heard about that, I talked to Bob, he looked at what happened. I've heard many stories through people. So I decided I wanted to talk to Bob myself.
What are we doing?
So are, is, did you, what, in that email, Jason, did you, how did you read that?
I read it both ways, I think he's talking about the open meeting, and he's talking about the meeting can and should be closed, it's a bit weird. If discipline is ultimately found warranted, then all subsequent meetings on the issue must be open. Is all it said.
But we know that, if anything, that we, the council, if the council even agrees that this is harassment, we don't have any, it's a moot point anyway, because he's not following, so... So there's no point in even having a secondary meeting. We just need, as a council, we just need a... We do have a copy, give it to him.
Yeah, yeah, it was mine, I've definitely thrown all of it on the table, so... So you don't have to give me a copy, that is all I was trying to...
You know, you can't sit here and say that there was no harassment, and yet you haven't looked at the paperwork.
Right, maybe, I don't know. I don't, you know, I still don't see any clear evidence for myself. But that's a question for, that's a judgment call, and, you know... I can disagree with it, and we can allege it, and claim it, and all that kind of stuff. Anyway, are we doing anything here more, or can we adjourn today? What's the plan?
So do we have a conclusion, we're going to ball this over and state our decision at the next meeting? Or do we think this is preliminary, we can't really say this is it?
That's how I would interpret it personally, would be a little overlooked. Everybody had an opportunity now to read all the evidence presented by the personnel committee, and then at a future time and date, I would definitely rule on the harassment part first, and then any discipline thereafter, if it's deemed that it was harassment. I would tread lightly on the discipline part until we know for sure about the authority, the council's authority. I would ask very lightly of the attorney, does the council have authority over each other and the mayor? You know, I don't feel like we do as elected officials, I personally don't think that I can hold Chris accountable. I think the voters would do that, and there's laws and statutes set up for, you know, recall elections and such. But our attorney may say we have that authority, I just don't know. So I don't feel comfortable, you know, I personally wouldn't feel comfortable saying, yes, harassment, yes, discipline, whether he'll follow it or not, because I don't know that we even have that legal authority to do it.
I mean, we can type something up, but then, again, he doesn't have to follow it.
Right. Right, now be careful, wrong words of discipline, or, you know, it's suggested, council action, I would say.
Yeah, I'm not, you know, we haven't even agreed whether this is, this is or isn't.
I'm, yeah, I'm going to leave that in the hands of this board. I, I'm, yeah, I'm going to leave that in the hands of this board, because I don't think personally that it would be right, knowing that I'm, this is my last meeting. You know, I think that there's definitely evidence out there, prior to the complaint, you know, especially the newsletter. Names individuals, which probably shouldn't have. So, I think there's evidence there, but then I'd be careful of the evidence thereafter the complaint came in.
Well, you know, that can be all, I can take that into consideration and strike it from, from, from the letter.
I would get more legal advice on that stuff also. Personally, from.
I think I have more freaking money on this.
Well, I mean, you, you spend enough taxpayer monies on, on financial forms.
I feel we spend money here and avoid a lawsuit down the road. It's worth money, well spent, to my view.
Yes, he has. I sent, I sent all this to him.
Did he give a legal, I suppose he can't give a legal opinion on that.
No, but he failed to, there's something there to the, to the allegation. And if, if, if it wouldn't have been for that, I would have probably, probably never. You know, I wanted his opinion before we.
No, that's what I asked.
Brought to the council, if there was, you know, if there was any at all that he thinks it was warranted and that there is. But if we, I guess we can't take any action, no, and you don't really think.
That's how I read it, but.
You don't really.
They're motion to a jury.
Two different ways.
What does everybody else think?
By no means I think we should kick the can down the road any further, but I don't think a week or two is going to hurt it.
But whoever fills your seat has to.
I think it just takes three of those.
Right.
Well, it would take all three of you, and because George would have to abstain, that's different.
Yeah, you would have to, you know.
It doesn't matter, because even if I did recuse myself, I would, the motion would pass for anything that was passed the council.
I have faith in it.
You know, so it's, you know, it's pretty clear where the votes are going. So. And I ask for money. I'm a bad guy.
Mr. Attorney?
There. There's your slide. I gotta write my, yeah, quick. Thanks, your word.
I know, I took a wage number.
I do need to get work.